Good evening, Hampstead. Welcome to the Hampstead School Board's regular meeting, May 24th, 2022, at approximately, can't read the clock really well, 7:05 PM. Ask Melissa if you can take the roll call. Please.
Yes. Jason Giard.
Here.
Carl Hubner.
Here.
And I believe we have Megan Malcolm calling in by phone. Ms. Malcolm, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. And would you also mind stating for the record if there's anyone else in the room with you right now?
No, I am alone.
Thank you. Erin Pellegrini.
Here.
And David Smith.
Here.
And Pinkerton Student Liaison, Jack Cameron.
Here.
Also seated at the board table is Superintendent of Schools Bob Thompson and CFO Jeff Dowd.
All right. Thank you, Melissa. If we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. All right. And board members, before I get into this, just so you know, with Megan on the call, for every action, we will be doing a roll call with Melissa, since we cannot see Megan raising her hand. So. Board members in front of you, you do have two sets of minutes, one from the May 10th regular meeting and the other within May 10th, non-public meeting minutes. I'll be looking for you to take a review and then looking for a motion to accept and have discussion.
I'll make the motion to accept the May 10th regular meeting minutes and the May 10th non-public minutes.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. Under Consent Agenda Personnel Report, it says that we accepted the resignations as presented and then with welcome, accepted professional resignations as presented under the motion.
Okay.
So if we could just change that to welcoming them, not their professional resignations.
It's a regretful typo. My apologies.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Melissa, would you maintain taking the roll call on this?
Sure. Mr. Giard.
Yes.
Dr. Hubner.
Yes.
Ms. Malcolm.
Yes.
Mrs. Pellegrini.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. And then next we have public comments, which we do have one from Mr. Elliott. If you want to come up here and announce your name, your address.
Good evening.
That was from Maria right there, I think.
Good evening. Mark Elliott, 15, Casey Stratus, Hampstead. I noticed data governance is on agenda. I'm going to reaffirm our data governance. I think that is a mistake on the part of the district. Our data governance is inadequate at class. And, you know, despite numerous notifications to the school staff, our students are continually asked to engage in unethical behavior using the internet, including fraudingly misrepresenting their age, accessing websites that are deemed inappropriate by contractual agreements that the school district made with its service providers. And I think what we really need is a deep dive on how the school handles its internet use. We've failed our students for more than two and a half, three years. And I'd say that my student basically just stays in everything in class because he's been blocked from sites that he's not open on. Actually, both my children, which are middle school students. We need to really dive deep into our data governance and reassess, make sure that we're compliant with district policy. Make sure that we're in compliance with the contractual agreements that we pay with our service providers. And more importantly, that we're in compliance with our certification with New Hampshire state law, which as of today, I would say we're not compliant with any of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Melissa, just make sure there's no one else correct.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. All right. So next, we're going to move on to our portion of school highlights and request Principal Dr. Chaney to join us.
All right. Thank you.
There we go.
Nailed it. All right. Thank you for having me tonight. I have quite a few celebrations to share from the Hampstead Central School for you this evening. In May, we celebrated our super staff with our Staff Appreciation Week. So I'd like to give a special thank you to our PTSA for their generosity. Our team was well-fed and celebrated all week long. The theme of superheroes was very appropriate for our teachers who continuously go above and beyond each day for their students. Additionally, a few extra awards were given out this month, as was announced at the last board meeting. Mrs. Wise Carver did receive the STEM Teacher of Excellence Award for the elementary grades. And Mrs. Gordon has also been nominated as a New Hampshire State Teacher of the Year, and she has received the Krista McAuliffe Teacher of Impact Award recently. Following up, we have some students to celebrate as well. Mr. Turelli worked with the VFW this spring to support their art contest called Illustrating America. Congratulations to Kiana George, Robert Pathier, and Stephen Varia, who were honored at the VFW Loyalty Day Celebration. Their artwork placed in our community. We have some exciting things happening out on our playground. This spring, we had an Eagle Scout come and replace the benches that surround the trees out on our playground. Those were actually installed several years ago by another Eagle Scout, and it was time to replace them as the trees continued to grow. So Michael Aberad, a former HCS Husky, completed his Eagle Scout project recently by replacing those benches. Beyond that, we've finally opened our Hampstead Hearts Science Library on our playground. This is in the theme of a little free library, but this contains science library resources for students. Students have access to field guides, informational text, and various science supplies to do some fun things out on the playground. They're enjoying access to those new resources and doing some learning when they're outdoors. This spring, our students in grades three and four ventures learned about water. Mrs. Wise Carver provided us several chapters of the book, When the World Runs Dry: Earth's Water in Crisis, which actually features a family from the community of Hampstead. The students learned all about water as a precious resource and how to support it. They even zoomed with local Sheila Nolan and Ken Richards from the Hampstead Water Resources Committee. Our students then participated from the fourth grade in a virtual science water fair, where they continued their in-depth knowledge of water. And a congratulations to Angelina LeBlanc and Rebecca Eyre, whose project on freezing speeds went on to represent HCS in the state competition. The exciting thing about this science fair is that although Angelina and Rebecca did place first, the other four groups all placed second with an average score of 18.25 points. It was a wonderful opportunity. I'm pleased to announce that we just returned to some more normalcy with our Grade Two Community Show last Friday. Our second graders hosted their community parade and show. Each year, they learn about the community of Hampstead, and then they circle our school in an on-property parade, which we're joined by the fire department. We're joined by the police department. We had a school board member join us as well. Thank you, Erin. And it's a wonderful celebration for families. It really does integrate art, music, phys ed, social studies, and Spanish this year. And then upcoming, we have the University of New Hampshire bringing their Soil Tent to the central school next week, the week of May 30. Students throughout our building, preschool through grade four, will be visiting the tent, which is a traveling exhibition. They're going to learn much more about the soil. What's it for? What grows in it? What might live in it? So the kids are really excited about that opportunity. And finally, we're going to end our year with a lot of wonderful events. We're bringing back the third-grade concert, our fourth-grade multicultural show. We have some field trips coming up. It's going to be a nice end of the year. One small correction to my dates on here. Field day is actually June 17th, not the 16th. So it'll be Friday, June 17th. Do you have any questions for me tonight? Nope.
Question on the enrollment.
Yeah.
What was the anticipated enrollment this year?
So COVID has skewed our numbers a bit. But when we had looked a couple of years ago, we were looking like we'd be a little bit closer to 500, about 100 students per grade level.
Okay. And as we entered this year, were we expecting 465?
For the 2223 school year.
Correct. And we started in September.
Yep. So we're losing a big population of fourth graders. We have about 100 students coming up here to the middle school. And right now, my kindergarten enrollment's at about 75 students who are enrolled for next year, and it's early. So I anticipate we'll probably be near the same, and it'll depend on how many families are coming back.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is something we're all looking forward to. Mr. Jack Cameron's final send-off, but we're expecting very well-written and articulated highlights.
All right. So yes, I have some final updates for Pinkerton Academy. Some, essentially a lot of graduation information and information regarding the new dress code policy and some final updates regarding some accomplishments of our students these past few weeks. The Pinkerton community is looking forward to a memorable end to the school year, celebrating the class of 2022 at awards night and graduation. Senior celebration and awards night will take place on the eve of graduation, Thursday, June 9th, at 6 o'clock PM on Memorial Field. The program includes the announcement of scholarships and awards, performances by a select choir, a student speaker, and a guest speaker. This is a special evening, a time to celebrate one another while looking forward to the big day ahead. Family and friends are encouraged to attend. Graduation for Pinkerton Academy's Class of 2022 will take place on Friday, June 10th, at 6 o'clock PM on Memorial Field. The gates open at 4 o'clock PM. Guests may park in the student lot off North Main Street or on the main campus, so essentially senior lot. Drivers with handicap placards should enter via the access road off of Shenito Road. Staff will direct those vehicles to a designated lot. Parking passes are not required for guests. Once arriving on the field, guests may choose to sit in the stands or on the field. Guests with physical disabilities or mobility limitations may sit in a designated area with a plus-one. Upon arrival, simply ask a Pinkerton staff member to direct you to the handicap seating area where someone will assist. Guests who choose to sit in the field may bring blankets, but folding chairs of any type are not permitted as they can damage the astroturf. Guests who bring chairs will be asked to leave them at the gate and retrieve them after the ceremony. The same applies to coolers and any other beverages. On a similar note, high heels, stilettos, pumps, and the like can also damage the turf, so we ask guests, graduates, and Pinkerton staff alike to wear flats, sneakers, or slip-ons to awards night and graduation. There are no guest limitations for either event, and the rain date for graduation is Saturday, June 11th, at 6 o'clock PM at Memorial Field. Recently, the Board of Trustees approved and updated student dress code for the 2022-2023 school year. This new dress code came from the hard work of a student committee with the guidance of teachers and a department head. The students created a policy that addresses the concerns of students, families, and staff, particularly focusing on crafting a dress code that applies to all students and is gender-neutral in its terminology. The result is a policy that we feel is fair and equitable to all students and example to other schools. We sincerely want to thank the students who led these efforts. They took the concerns of the student body and brought them forward in a way that was constructive. They weighed the priorities of all stakeholders and presented their proposal to staff and ultimately the Board of Trustees. They stood behind their work and addressed questions and concerns appropriately. And Pinkerton Academy is very proud of their efforts. The remainder of this school year will be used to educate our students and the school community about this new policy. To that end, the video production students helped members of the Student Dress Code Committee create an educational video highlighting key elements of the dress code. You can find the new policy and this video on our website, with the updated dress code also being reflected in the 2022-2023 student planner, so students can access it at any time in any fashion. Recently, five Pinkerton seniors flew down to Washington DC to represent the state of New Hampshire in the National Restaurant Association's National Pro Start Invitational. The competition gives student teams from all 50 states, Puerto Rico, and Guam one hour to execute a student-developed three-course meal without the use of electricity, refrigeration, or running water, forcing them to rely on just two portable butane burners. On top of taste and presentation, students are critiqued on communication, time management, organization, knife skills, sanitation, and recipe menu development and costing. Congratulations to Andrew Blaska, a Hampstead School's graduate, John Collins, CJ Hockem, Veronica Roy, and Nick Takalakis, also a Hampstead School's graduate, on placing 10th, the highest Pinkerton has achieved at the national level. Pinkerton Academy fielded two teams representing New Hampshire at the largest robotics competition in the world. It was held in Dallas from May 5th to 7th. The VEX Robotics Competition consists of over 20,000 teams worldwide that compete for a chance to win a spot at the World Championships. Pinkerton's teams Chaos and Team Eclipse were part of the elite 813 high school teams that competed. Coach Ernie Byron's teams did a phenomenal job in the qualifying matches, with Eclipse and Chaos ranked 12th and 14th respectively in their divisions, which guaranteed them spots in the division playoffs. The guaranteed playoff slots had other teams from around the world soliciting both Pinkerton teams to select them as alliance partners, building elements of strategy, scouting, and networking that cultivated students' opportunities for growth. Congratulations to both teams on their accomplishments this season and performance at Worlds. And we are, Pinkerton is very proud of the VEX program and the well-developed CTE program that we have for robotics. Throughout the year, the Investing Club has been participating in a regional stock market game competition that has just finished. With over 100 teams competing, Pinkerton teams did very well. In the top five, Matthew Hubner, Class of 2022, came in fourth. Zach Holt, Class of 2023, came in second. And Joshua Jones, Class of 2024, a Hampstead graduate, finished first. Congratulations to the students and to the members of the club who competed. The National Honor Society inducted its new members and recognized its second-year senior members. Over 120 students were honored for their commitments to scholarship, service, leadership, and character. Congratulations to all these students. And the Pinkerton Academy Student Council recently elected its officers for the 2022-2023 Executive Board. Three among them are Hampstead School's graduates: Jenna Gordon, President; Juliana Meegan, Secretary; and Erin Flynn, Historian. It has been my pleasure and honor to serve as the Pinkerton Academy Student Representative to the Town of Hampstead and its school board. In the coming weeks, Pinkerton Academy will select a student representative for the 2023 school year and will likely announce them sometime over the summer or in August or September. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jack. Always a pleasure to hear from you. Gratefully, I don't think we've had enough time to spend with you, since you've only been here for a few months, but we did want to say thank you and give a small token of appreciation for what you've done, to do this above and beyond what you already do, so much of in your extracurricular. So we've given a nice little gift for you to enjoy at a bookstore, as we imagine you spend time there.
Spend some time.
Or will spend time there as you further your educational experience. So if you want to pass that down.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Jack, very much for all your support. And I'm not sure if anybody can backfill your dynamic personality here, so appreciate it very much. Anybody else?
I just want to say thank you. I've done a fabulous job. But I'm not surprised, because I know we had you starting this. I feel like, you know, it might have been part of this, because you started off as our lead of PTSA. And then, I mean, look at you now. So good luck in college. I don't think you're going to need any, but you're going to do great things.
Right.
Agreed. So thank you very much, Jack. And just remember, you can run for school board as soon as you turn 18.
I've already.
All right. So with that, we're going to move on to technology presentation from Mrs. Thomaselli. Oh, and Mr. Dion.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for being here. And we're about to do our Hampstead Technology Department update.
Hold on, Jim, so we can hear you and the people at home.
We're about to do our Hampstead Technology Department update. Thank you for being here.
I'll just do it from here. We're trying to use our new mouse, so it stays within range. We don't have to bring it. All right. We're good.
So the topics for consideration. First will be the current state of the technology department, our technology budget, our current staffing, curriculum and ed tech, and looking back and moving forward. So first, I'd like to discuss the routine and preventative maintenance. All of our servers and network appliances are updated to the latest firmware and security software on a monthly basis. We review the accuracy of all of our backup jobs daily, and the student and staff device repair is done in-house. We have replacement parts, which are included in our budget creation process, and we make routine adjustments and updates to the Hampstead School's website. Some of our one-time projects completed. We have Power School Enrollment Express. Last fall, we successfully delivered access of registration and enrollment forms to guardians through the Power School Parent Portal. We also set up the SAU with a network infrastructure. This includes a voice-over IP managed phone system that we deployed. We also deployed a network infrastructure with a managed switch environment, which includes a firewall and gateway antivirus protection. We also have audio/video upgrade to the HMS CAF. That's where we're at now. We drafted an RFP to put this project out to bid. So you're aware, an RFP is a request for a proposal. It's a business document that announces a project, describes it, and solicits bids from qualified contractors to complete it. We were able to secure grant funding for this. Our department attended training on the equipment, and we learned the environment. We use the equipment to record local events, including this meeting and all school board meetings. We're also excited to use this equipment in other ways.
So on the bottom right-hand side of this slide, you'll see a clip from when Katia Preston was here, which was a Holocaust survivor that came to speak with our eighth graders that our renowned social studies instructor Katie Wolf coordinated. So the reason I wanted to show you this is this video has really taken on a life of its own. It has over 500 views now and is going to be featured footage in a documentary that they're making about Katia's life called Hidden, which we were just recently asked for permission to use. So I'm very excited. And when I wrote the grant, I knew there would be potential for curriculum integration. I did not really think of the reach it could potentially have to educate people about such an important event far beyond, you know, our eighth-grade curriculum. So I look very much forward to other events that are held in this arena with this technology, so that we can allow the community in, allow other subject matter experts in, and just share what's going on in our schools even more widely.
Some of the remaining projects planned. We have network appliance upgrades this summer at the HMS Hampstead Middle School. We have projector replacements. All older analog VGA projectors will be replaced with newer HDMI-supported models. This includes 20 classrooms between HMS and HCS that will benefit from this. We also do the end-of-year state reporting within our department. It is an aggressive schedule this year. The Department of Ed requires that we have batch-verified status on all of our submissions that happens to be our last day of school. So I will be very busy on that day. Our student-staff device purchases and deployment. We have an RFP that will be going out to include 200 Chromebook devices. This will be 100 for fifth grade and 100 for first grade. We also purchase through an RFP a bid for 25 staff teacher laptops that is included in their device rotation. Staff devices are on a four-year replacement cycle, and the deployment consists of custom images that is managed by our department. Staff and student device collection over the summer. We go through student devices and repair known damages and issues. We inventory and schedule staff device updates. This includes migration to new devices if they are part of the current rotation cycle. We will also be creating an RFP to redesign the Hampstead School's website this year. Yes. So on the technology budget, where do we stand in terms of approved allocations? We worked closely with the school board this year to create an approved zero-based budget for the 2022-2023 school year. We will be spending the remaining technology budget of the 2122 school year to upgrade older, out-of-date projectors in classrooms, as discussed earlier, as well as professional development and training for in-house IT staff. Have there been any large unanticipated expenditures? The only large unanticipated expenditure was the installation of our audio/video equipment in the HMS CAF, which we were able to secure grant funding for. How is inflation and supply chain disruptions impacting the Hampstead Technology Department? Well, the semiconductor chip shortages have created problems for consumers and also in the industry. This includes problems stemming from the COVID-19 pandemic and less supply, more demand. We address and circumvent supply chain issues by creating RFP purchasing and working with reputable vendors to give us honest answers to shipping timeframes and projected device availability. Let me explain the RFP process. Any expense over $10,000, we need three quotes. Any expense over $20,000, we need a bidding process that includes at least three bids and a public opening. We have done this virtually, and it is safe and easier for all participants to attend. Earlier this year, we did experience an issue with iPad ordering through Apple for our kindergarten classrooms, which resulted in a six-to-eight-month delay. Therefore, we do not want to be harnessed to a single device. It has forced us to look around and see what other devices are available, and we decided to go with touchscreen Chromebooks for kindergarten as it is cheaper and more readily available.
So I just, I wanted to explain here that we, regarding the touchscreen Chromebooks for kindergarten, we are increasingly seeing youngsters come into our kindergarten and preschool programs that have really good gesturing skills. They've been using Kindle Fires and iPads and phones for a long time before they even get to school. Our goal is to transition those skills, as young as possible, into keyboarding skills so they can type. So we use our iPads and a variety of apps that are approved through our vetting software for data governance. And we also wanted to integrate some newer technologies. So on the bottom of this, you see Consolidated Communications Grant. We were so fortunate earlier in the year to have the opportunity to apply for a grant through Consolidated Communications. They are our local internet provider. So we used that opportunity to kind of pilot the touchscreen Chromebooks. And we secured five. And we secured five of them and gave them to our reading specialist to use with a program called Lexia, which is for reading and writing intervention. And Lexia is challenging for kindergartners because they have to type responses in comprehension. And you can't do that really on an iPad unless you have a separate keyboard. So we gave the old kick of the tires with the touchscreen Chromebooks earlier in the year, realized that they're really well-suited for kindergarten. The ones we bought are very durable, and we bought cases that are called gumdrops. I keep calling them jelly, but they're gumdrop cases, and they're very, like rugged. So that process you'll see over and over with me. I like to use local soft monies to pilot things. When I know that it's a good use, then we'll, we'll use our federal title grants to support a wider purchase. So once we realized the touchscreen Chromebooks were a good option for kindergarten, we went to Title IV to expend some of the money from 19, the 2019-2020 Title IV funds to outfit kindergarten with touchscreen Chromebooks in lieu of waiting on supply chain issues with iPads. So I think it really, you know, it checked off a few boxes with one step. And I'll let Joe talk about E-Rate because he's done such a great job with our E-Rate work this year.
Hampstead School District utilizes E-Rate funding. E-Rate reimburses school districts and libraries for broadband internet and for the equipment to deliver that internet access to a school, within a school, to a student. We utilize E-Rate to provide internet services to both buildings HMS and HCS. E-Rate is now structured in five-year budget cycles. 2022 is the first year of the next cycle, which will run through 2026. In the year 2021-2022, we have $6,967 committed, of which we will get 40% reimbursement back. We are currently using these committed funds for Y-Bot, which will be, we will use to implement a wireless network security sensor to gain access to collected data on our Wi-Fi and our wired networks. This provides us with crucial data for troubleshooting existing or potential future bottlenecks in our throughput of data. In the year 2022-2023, we have 26,823 committed, off of which we will get 40% reimbursement back. These committed funds are being utilized to purchase extra access points and firewall replacements within our infrastructure. What are our present staffing levels and allocations? The core of the technology department consists of Nicole Thomaselli, the Director of 21st Century Learning Assessment and Technology, myself, Joe Dion, Technology Department Manager, Michael Shaw, the Network and Data Technician, and Marie Nicolosi, the Facilities and Technology Department Administrative Assistant. We also have Chad Pimentel and Sushmita Kruvi, who join our technology team as technology educators and integrators. They are our first line of communication with the student body. Presently, we have one vacancy for Technology Assistant. We are conducting interviews this Wednesday, tomorrow, for this position. This position provides device support to students by manning a Chromebook office during school hours for students and staff to utilize for help and repair. This position will be available to broadcast the school board meetings and operate our audio/video equipment. The office will reside at HMS for grades five through eight to support and float to HCS when needed. We also have an additional IT support position becoming available July 1st. Similar position to the existing Technology Assistant, but directly supports Hampstead Central School, grades pre-K through grade four. It's going to be really nice to have someone house over there for support.
And I would just add that if you know of people who are interested, encourage them to apply. Those are both entry-level positions. We have one posted currently, and another one will be coming posted in the next few weeks. And we provide training, and we are fun to work with. So the next slide is about curriculum and educational tech. And this slide is really representative of some of the things we've been able to accomplish this year, working together, being a curriculum department and also a technology department. So this is where I like, I feel like my two worlds kind of intersect with curriculum and technology. We are continually rethinking our instructional practices, as is every district post-pandemic. You know, we've got a lot of new, exciting tools and skills. We've got to design processes to vet through them and utilize them appropriately. We've also got to really rethink the needs of our students and how we can address them because the needs are varied. We have pockets of learning loss and skill deficiencies, and yet we still keep everyone in, you know, the same grade levels, and we move them together. So how do we differentiate with this technology? I'm very excited about having a new strategic plan. I think it will offer us a lot of guidance as we need to rewrite our tech plan next year. And having that vision helps us to formulate the kind of nuts and bolts of what is needed in terms of our technology budgeting and resources, and also our procedures and protocols, so that we can support that initiative. We also have formed a data governance committee this year. This committee meets monthly. It consists of myself, Joe, our network administrator, Michael. It also includes Lori Lynn Griffin, who is a classroom teacher and was our connection coaching coordinator this year. It also includes our two tech integrators, as well as our two librarians have just joined, our school library media specialists. So I'm very excited to have their perspective on the committee. And I would like to include more stakeholders in this committee, and I'll be sending an email out to the community within the next week or so, asking if there are community members that want to be involved. So it's a great opportunity for anyone in the community who feels passionate about data governance to join us and help us kind of think our practices. So far this year, though, this committee has developed protocols for teachers to submit requests for software use, and we also meet regularly to vet through those requests with our data consortium. So I can talk a little bit more about that next on the agenda. And I'm pretty proud of the work that we've made moving forward with that. You'll also see this continual process where we're going to use local, state, and federal grants to support pilot programs as well as large purchases. So if we have, like Joe had said earlier, a one-time kind of expensive purchase, we're going to try to get that done with federal grant money whenever possible. Sometimes that won't be possible, and we'll have to figure out other ways to budget for it over time. For example, the projector inventory that he was talking about, that will be part of our budget, and we'll do that in small bites over time. But other pilot ideas, innovative programs, technologies that we're not quite sure of, we're going to use smaller grants to pilot things, see if they're tried and true, and then use other grants to fund it moving forward until we really believe it should be part of our budget. And also, we'll be doing a needs assessment at the end of the year to get a sense of what is needed for professional development and tech training, both from our teachers and the IT staff. So we're going to be using our early release days for professional development next year, and we want to make sure we target their skills because their skills are very varied and broad. So I want to make sure we address some ed tech training as well. Moving, looking back and moving forward, we kind of put an essential question out here about how has the pandemic changed our schools in terms of technology usage? Because we've come a very long way in two years. So I would say recently, in the past year, we have updated our protocols for data governance, as well as our loner devices. We, we now have kids bringing devices to school every single day, which means sometimes they forget their devices. So we have to account for that. We need to have loners ready to go, as well as chargers and charging stations. And as Joe's referenced, we have a Chromebook office in case there are damages or repairs or things that, you know, need to be fixed urgently. We also have a new system for requesting software. Teachers get very excited when they learn about a new technology, and we need to have them follow the right chain of protocols for requesting those purchases, as well as requesting access to utilize those tools with their classrooms. We are going to be making some updates to our acceptable use policy. So when parents go to reregister in the fall, you will see some changes in the language so that we can have really clear agreements on access for Google Apps for Education, photo permission, video permission, as well as other software licensing. The other thing that's been really great is Google Classroom and CSO. So these were kind of unique tools that pre-pandemic, I would say, maybe were used in high school settings, maybe a little bit at the middle school level, never really in elementary. Now, our teachers maintain either a CSO portal or a Google Classroom, and it's been very helpful in terms of keeping their instructional materials accessible outside of the school day. So it also helps us be a little bit more paperless. Kids can submit their assignments online, which makes it easy for teachers to grade in some cases. And they can access things outside of the classroom. It's been very, very helpful as kids have had to quarantine to be able to jump onto their classrooms, Google Classroom, and stay current with their classes, which is the next bullet. So we use Zoom and connection coaching to keep kids in touch should they have to quarantine or if they test positive for COVID and they need to be out of school. This was our, and you've heard about connection coaching probably too many times this year, but this was our attempt to ensure educational equity for kids who had to be out. And I think, given the number of absences that were a little bit unexpected this year, this was a really good program to shore up that need. We did manage to put this into SR3, this expense, including our Zoom licensing. So I'm really happy to be able to use grant funds to do that as well.
Middle school has been a one-to-one environment since early 2017. But we included Hampstead Central School through the pandemic, so every student had a device for remote learning. 182 Chromebooks through SR1 for HCS to get us to that one-to-one initiative. We use federal grant funding for that, as Nicole just mentioned, and not taxpayers' money. Our wireless infrastructure upgrade happened for the entire district. We upgraded to Wi-Fi six-capable access points in every instructional area and office. We also made updates to our replacement cycles for student devices in HCS now that they are one-to-one. Sorry about that. I'm not used to the magic mouse. What are our future priorities? As I discussed earlier, our projector upgrades. Going to update all of our out-of-date projectors in the district. The idea is that any teacher will be able to go into any classroom with any device and project to the projectors. As it stands right now, some teachers have to carry dongles to connect, to convert from VGA to HDMI. If they forget their dongle, it becomes an issue, and it's just a lot clearer and more high-definition, just better education. Website overhaul. We'll be working to update the HSD website to be more streamlined and user-friendly.
We, yep, we're also going to be looking at some tools to pilot for RTI data management. So our RTI teams meet approximately every six weeks and look at student performance, and they document, you know, programming changes that we make for those children in a classic Google site. So anyone that uses classic Google sites should know that that tool's sunsetting on June 30th. So we need a different solution. So we have a few options, and we're going to pilot some of those tools next year and then make a decision thereafter. We're also going to be rewriting our technology plan, and our technology committee is going to be meeting to find creative ways to support teaching and learning in other learning environments. So part of the strategic plan, Priority Five, is expanded learning environments. And we want to just be sure that we are ahead of those needs in terms of Wi-Fi in outdoor spaces, technology on field trips, and anything else should it, you know, come up.
As our IT department grows, we'll be seeking training for our information technology staff to further grow our skills, knowledge, and expertise. We are looking to forward, looking forward to providing opportunities for students to learn more about IT and how it works within our school district. We'll be working with our technology teachers and integrators to incorporate this in the form of student tech aids.
Great. Do you have any questions that Joe and I can answer?
School members, any questions for Joe or Nicole? So, I mean, when I was a kid, I was very destructive of technology, let's just say.
Destructive?
Yeah, like, how often do you have to replace laptops for the kids? Like, what's the turnover for them? And by the way, thank you very much for turning those over because I know it's going to be really hard to keep up with the kids doing that.
Yes. Also, we have to keep up to date with the devices because they have to meet the minimum standard of the Chrome OS. We use these devices for state testing, and the state testing with a secure browser, it has to be up to a certain current OS, and after the device becomes out of date, they will no longer update. So that's one of the main reasons why we do four years.
And you keep like a set of backups? So when a kid breaks one, you give them a new one and they?
Yes, absolutely. We have some on hand. That's one of the processes of our Chromebook office in the morning. If kids forget a device or if it's damaged, we give them a loner device for the day. And then if we have to send that device out for repair, if we cannot fix it internally, or if it's a brand-new device that's part of a warranty, we will give them a temporary device for a long-term period, up to two weeks, until they get their device back in hand.
Awesome. That's really well done. Thank you.
All right. First, I would say I've heard really great things about the department in general. A lot of emphasis this year has been on the new teacher at the HCS. So a lot of kudos from fellow teachers, from parents, students of a really great job and very fortunate to have her. So just want to pass that on. I've heard that a number of times.
That is Sushmita Kruvi, and we are very fortunate to have her on our team. She has a lot of experience in the tech support world and has transitioned to be a tech integrator through site-based licensing. We're ecstatic to have her. She's been incredibly helpful in reaching the tech department and the teaching world.
I was curious if, you know, near the conclusion of the school year, you know, you referenced a lot about getting funding from grants, et cetera. I think that'd be really important and good to hear. What's that total look like? You know, because there's, there's a lot of instances, you're saying 3,000 here, 6,000 here, 40% there. I think that'd be good, something to communicate out to the public about, you know, where we are saving, which, you know, we're putting a good emphasis on to bring the value to the community, students, et cetera. So I just ask if we can do that hopefully at the end of the year. I don't know if school members.
Well, I was kind of along the whole process here. There's a lot of good information that came out. I was wondering if it would be actually better if we got maybe like a quarterly update with anything that you guys are working on, any of those grants that you're receiving, that you're applying for, what have you? If we got more regular updates to keep us in the loop a little bit better, I think it would go a long way. Plus, with the technology now, you know, the, the community is going to hear that as well. So it's just something to consider that.
Sure. And we may not have, I just want to kind of preface, we may not have as many grant opportunities in the future as we've had. Some of this money that I've been spending was money from 1819 and 1920 federal funds. So once, you know, we kind of get a little bit more caught up, we shouldn't have three-year-old grants. They do allow the grant cycle to be about a three-year cycle, and that was an extension due to COVID. So most of these grants will be on a two-year cycle moving forward.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But I'd be happy to update you and provide you with all the numbers.
All right. Just the last bullet that you, oh, a couple, I have two more questions really. But the last one that you said involve in the children more, is that something you're looking at rolling out some sort of program? After school, you know, something, education? What's your ideas there? Because I think that's, you know, being in that industry, being in that, you know, area, we, we're at a shortage of people who are data literate and, you know, really IT literate. So it'd be really great to see what we're going to do. More emphasis there. I don't know if you have any suggestions of what you're looking at, not necessarily what you are rolling out, but what are you thinking?
So after-school clubs would definitely be a possibility. We do have some access to green screen equipment, but we are looking for an instructor who feels skilled. So one of the PD things I would like to do first is get some teachers kind of trained in how to do green screen technology before we start offering clubs and get a little bit ahead of ourselves. But the idea of having students help with like a Genius Bar or the Chromebook Office, I think, would be really wonderful. It could be part of our RTI programming because we know we have kiddos that are very hands-on and savvy, and we want to make sure they're on the good side and not the evil side of technology hacking. But often, that's how you find the kids that are, they push the envelope and they help you figure out where your shortcomings are. So I'd love to incorporate those kids in an RTI program. And like I said earlier, our RTI model, you know, they kind of switch around every six weeks or so. So it's absolutely something we can incorporate. But again, it's getting the staff ready for that in advance of the offering. But I could see this time next year, having some student updates to share.
That'd be great. And the last one, because literally my title at work is data governance officer. I'm very interested in the data governance plan. I'm sure someone else is in the crowd. So can you repeat for the public what you were saying about what you're looking for in the coming weeks about the data governance committee?
Sure. So we have a data governance committee that is internal right now. I would like to broaden it and incorporate more stakeholders. I did not realize that was your work title. You're more than welcome to join our committee. Other community members are more than welcome to join so that. Other community members are more than welcome to join so that we can hear various perspectives and you'll get to see the teachers' requests. So we have a spreadsheet where people fill in a Google form and we go line by line and look at the tool. We run it through our S D P C is our Student Data Privacy Consortium that we're part of, our member consortium. And they do kind of the line-by-line detailing of whether the tool passes COPA, SIPA and FERPA requirements. If it does not pass New Hampshire state compliance laws, we will deny access to that tool. There are a number of tools that have been approved in other states, but not New Hampshire. And sometimes those are hard messages to live, to deliver back to teachers because they, they really become very accustomed to using these tools. So we've had a few circumstances this year where we've had to dial back our use on certain products until they comply and we've had to find other sources.
Is that a communication that's going to be sent out shortly to community members or how?
Sure, I could send that out before the end of the week. Yeah. We meet monthly. Right now, we do meet during the school day. We could move it to an after-school meeting. But we've been able to do like lunch, lunch sessions this year. But we also, we meet in a hybrid format. So sometimes who's ever available meets in person, but we also have people Zoom in. So if community members want to be involved, but they can't say leave work, we can offer a Zoom link to participate.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
Well, I, I love the idea of having the students help out with the I T. I have one that probably could have set up all your computers for you. Yeah, so I think it's great, great idea.
All right. Think that's it? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. All right. Next is, we're going to keep Ms. Thomaselli here and talk about the data governance reaffirmation.
So in your board packet, you will see, let me just get off of the screen here. In your board packet, you will see our data governance plan. This is a kind of reaffirmation. There are a few minor edits to the plan this year. Mainly you'll find them on page three. Our data governance team has been restructured a little bit to incorporate myself as well in, in my kind of unique role in curriculum and technology as well as our library media specialists. The R S A's haven't really evolved too much on page four. Those are kind of the guiding documents. You'll also see some changes to our data governance website, which I wanted to show you up here. If I can just get my mouse to work. I've put the protocols on our website over here. You can go to the district site and then click on Departments and Technology. And we're going to be rehauling this website soon. The navigation on it is a little cumbersome, but I wanted to point out to people where you can find information about all of the laws that we are, you know, accountable to. Some of these are federal laws, other are state law. New Hampshire R S A is one eight nine point six five and six, six and six seven kind of apply to student privacy six eight. But you will find here a link to our S D P C, S D P C, which is our school's Student Data Privacy Alliance Group. And if you click on this link down here, this will show you all of the software programs that we have vetted through this year and approved for use by students and/or staff. So it's important to keep in mind that some programs are for use by staff and some programs are for use by office members, quite frankly. Not all of this is just educational technology for kids. But you'll find here all of the entries that we have fielded requests for from our teachers. They select which content area and grade level they want to use it for. And we approve it based on the department and the age if it is compliant with child safety laws. And so when our teachers do find a new tool, and many of them do, they go to workshops, they read blogs, they participate in professional development sessions with their respective consortiums in their content areas. They put in a request and we process those requests monthly. And you can see the request form. Let me scroll up here. If you go to Educational Software Request for Use. And our teachers have been really good about, you know, backtracking and thinking about the tools they've used over the years and filling out this Google form and being patient with us as they wait for our approvals because they do have to wait sometimes a full month, sometimes even longer for us to process the request, especially at the beginning of the year. We had to go kind of backwards through all the different things. We do also at this point, ask them about the budget because some of these tools are free and some of them are not. And it's important for them to know what the long-term plan is for budgeting for their requests. I don't know if there's, I'm sorry. How much more do you want to go into? So that, so this, um, this document will be continually, you know, it's, I feel like it's, we're reaffirming it tonight, but this is a document that we'll be looking at next year and making updates to. There's also some information here that we had to update this year about our, our medical system that our nurse uses. We now use a program called SNAP. So that had to be cleared through data governance and updated in this document. But as we make improvements and changes to our process, we'll be making improvements and changes in this document as well. Does anyone have any questions about it? I know it is quite a lengthy document and I would like to try to get it down to a more reasonable size. It's probably about forty pages.
So did we inherit this from Timberlane?
I believe it originated when we were part of Timberlane and there were some changes made to it last year. I can't honestly tell you what the original, how, how far away.
I would not expect you to be able to.
I don't know.
I, I do remember in my first, like, say, I think Jason, you were here too. Our first three months, it was brought in in two thousand nineteen. And that's where, I don't know if it originated there or it was updated tremendously there, but I remember it was a big, big ordeal then. So I think, you know, while we were part of Timberlane, Melissa?
Yeah, just to clarify, we weren't really ever part of Timberlane, but there might have been some collaboration between the previous Director of Technology, Dr. Dancy for Hampstead and Timberlane's Director of Technology, Ken Henderson.
Right. And thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome.
And I don't know this, I don't know if you know this, but how data governance is fairly new when it comes to school districts. So it's kind of a work in progress.
Yeah, and I would also suggest that the work that both Joe and Nicole have done this year, we are light years ahead of where we were. To Mr. Elliott's point, there is still work that needs to be done. Teachers have preferred software programs that they've been using some for a decade. And it's, it's very challenging to have, have those conversations about why we may or may not be able to use them and getting them. So I commend the work that's been done. It's extraordinary. But, you know, it's my job to push this team in terms of accountability to make sure that we continue with the work that needs to get done. Because there is a lot of work that needs to get done.
But it's, yeah, if you have a teacher that's been around for twenty years, they're learning how to adapt to this new environment, especially over COVID. So I would assume it would be pretty challenging.
So is this system that you have to run these programs through, is it, is it supposed to catch those things like Mr. Elliott brought up about, you know, students being able to get to sites that they should not be able to get to? Is that supposed to stop that from being?
Yes and no. It's not so much a browsing tool as it is a software tool. I know some of the sites, some of the tools are websites that you would go to. Some are apps and others are things you would download and install. Our firewalls are what will prevent kids from getting to certain sites. The S D P C does not provide any kind of blockage. What the S D P C does is guide your decision-making as to whether you should or should not engage in rostering children with that software. So if many of the tools will want to know, say, a student name or a student homeroom or what grade they're in, this agreement with S D P C, once it's signed by the vendor, which is the software company, they, they agree to not, to not, not comply with COPA, SIPA and FERPA laws. So you then have to make your decision internally whether, if, okay, if they won't sign the student data privacy agreement, should we be using them? And our line is no. If they won't sign that student data privacy agreement, then that's a big red flag for me. And you have to wonder why they won't. So no more use for us. And in some cases, those are tools that, you know, we've been paying for, for a while and we're going to, you know, we've stopped buying them. In other cases, they're free tools. And then we wonder why is it free? Is there a paid version that would be a little bit more secure? Or is there an alternate tool that can do something similar that won't require any student names? The less information we share with companies, the better off we are. But training teachers to understand and know these things, this is a challenge. So we use a product called Clever. Clever is a dashboard, if you will, so that when a student logs into their Chromebook, they go to Clever and they only see software that has been approved by our district and or purchased after, after being approved. So they don't just go to Google and browse around. They go in, they go to Clever, they go right to the tool that the teacher wants them to use. So it helps to kind of minimize some of that searching that would get blocked by our firewall if it were inappropriate.
So I assume that if, so say I was, my child was looking at something and they got to something that they weren't supposed to get to. We would report that to Joe or yourself and you guys would look into that.
Yeah, you can whitelist pages once we know that there's a site. And some of the filtering, the, the Barracuda filters that we use, and I think it is Barracuda, no. Sonicwell, I'm sorry, are smart filters. Do you want to? Yeah, come on up. So some of the filtering tools that, you know, school districts use, they're smart, so they're adaptive. So once they see a hit more than once, they will add it to the, to the blacklist.
So we have two layers of content filtering. One, as Nicole mentioned, was built into our firewalls. We also have extensions that are mandatory that the students cannot remove. One that we use is called Securely and it allows us to run content filters for permit and deny. We do have a very lengthy list of websites that we do not allow them to go to. That, those lists are updated by the company as well. So there's categories that they cannot get to, things like that. Now, we're looking at also bringing that content filtering usage to Central School for next year as well. So that way all of our students will be connected. Right now, Central School, they don't typically bring their devices home except for on remote learning days. But next year, we will be fully secure in that area.
So my question is, you know, there's, you know, again, because of knowing a little bit of background here, you know, a lot of the data governance protection that's out there is meant to protect, you know, consumer rights, right? How are we ensuring that the data is not being collected on our students externally on the applications we're using? That's my first question.
Yeah, that, that is why we are part of a consortium. Because the fine print on all of these products, it becomes very heavy legally. So we are members of this consortium and they have a team of lawyers and data experts that work directly with the vendors to determine whether or not a school should or should not use them. And many districts in New Hampshire are part of this consortium as well as around the country. So I have more information linked up to our website and you can see all of the members that are part of it. But we're, we're reliant on S D P C to help us kind of vet through those details. And we also kind of mitigate some of that through doing our own rostering in the tech department. So our teachers should not be in a situation where they're uploading student information anywhere. We also, if we do need to mail student information, like if we need to email, we use secure mail services for those situations. But for the most part, anytime a student account is generated on a product, it's been generated by someone in the tech department and then issued through Clever. But that is, that is a shift in public education, just so you're aware, I would say in the last five years. For years, teachers would make their own usernames, generate their own class passwords. There was no kind of centralization of that until the data governance laws passed pretty recently.
All right. My next question goes to Dr. Hubner's statement about, you know, we have professionals that have been doing this for many years, going about their websites that they use, their learning areas, and this is a shift. How often are we finding that the requests aren't coming through? And we're finding, I don't want to say rogue, it's more of like the, the just, they're not, you know, bringing in those websites. How often is that happening?
I don't know if I could quantify a time period. It's, I would say it probably correlates with projects. So certain projects that are, you know, traditionally done in certain grades require, you know, internet research and backgrounds and teachers have their go-tos for research. So our school media, library media specialists are incredibly helpful in this arena because they are the first person the teacher talks to when we think about starting, you know, the Tidepool unit in first grade, they go to the librarian and they say, can we see all the Tidepool books and do you have that online Epic collection? And how can I get the kids on it? And, and having those people be on our data governance committee is going to be very helpful. It already has been very helpful. So we're kind of catching things as we, as we're using them.
Okay. And then what are the ramifications, I would say, for anyone, including students, when they are using, let's say, sites that they did not get approved or sites that they're not supposed to be using? All the way through from, let's say, from Mr. Thompson down, you know, all the way to the students, what's the ramifications?
Yeah, so I think the first part is we really need to look at our digital citizenship curriculum and kind of redesign that, particularly for middle school, because the technology has evolved so much in the past two years that we need to make sure the kids understand what they should and shouldn't be doing and how to determine sites that are potentially dangerous and educate them. But it's like anything else, once the kids have, you know, completed their digital citizenship unit and they continually access inappropriate sites, it, it would become part of our progressive discipline. The good news is the sites get blocked as we find out about them. But as you all know, sometimes it's tricky to stay ahead of the very savvy children.
Last question I have for you, yeah, it might be a little conversation a bit, but when is the state law to adopt this? What is the time here? Because you said statutory, we have to.
It's annual. So I'm not sure. I, I think the first date it was adopted was the end of May, so I'm under the impression we have to do it every May.
I think my one suggestion that if we do have the time is take you up on the offer of having community members provide input to this before confirming this. Is what I would, I would suggest to the board members. Just so we can get the input to see if anything should or could change. To at least have an open forum of what, you know, inputs to this, either to change or to take into consideration in the coming year.
And would it be possible, I don't know if it's the right thing to do, just as a different perspective, to add the S R O? Maybe get some input from him as well, just something that we might be missing as far as those community meetings go? Just to see what his input is.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I can reach out to him.
Yeah, I like the idea of having the committee and having some additional input. I think you have people that will be able to give good input, maybe of something you wouldn't even think of. So I think it would be a good. Good perspectives, you know, it's good to have.
I mean, I, I am going to just echo what Mr. Thompson said. It's, it is much better than it's been. I remember hearing things that, just a couple of years ago, of a few things that were going on as far as, you know, lessons planned around certain, you know, technologies. People weren't doing it maliciously, just I don't think it was on the forefront of their mind. I think you've definitely brought it to the forefront of people's mind. And it'd be good to, you know, understand what is, what is next to bring this to people's minds, you know, that are going to be providing curriculum and education for the students.
And I would just add that some of the curriculum tools we brought in online this year, the, the tools are getting better. The curriculum products are getting better. So they're incorporating, for example, our Big Ideas Math Curriculum has a whole suite of learning games. So does our iReady, MyPath. There's all of these learning games that are skill-specific. So having good resources that are part of quality curriculum is so helpful for our teachers. So they know what to use, you know. But yeah, I think we've come a long way. We have a lot still to work on.
And I applaud you. I mean, this is very difficult to do. Data is everywhere. You know, to create a data literate organization takes a long time to do. It's not something overnight. So, you know, definitely appreciate the effort here. But I think, you know, my suggestion for board members to consider is if we could, between now and the next meeting, we have a little bit extra time between the next meeting. We have about three weeks, not two weeks. If we could have a, some sort of forum. If we could have a um some sort of forum to allow community members and the committee itself just uh do one more pass of this. Now, board members, any thoughts?
Sure, we can do that.
Hi, David.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I completely agree. Um, I think it's a great idea to have public, public input.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. So next on the agenda is to talk about the HC addition plan design. So to just tee this up a little bit, and then I'll pass it over to Mr. Thompson and Mr. Dowd. Uh, over the last, I think we're going on about a month and a half, two months, we've uh worked together, Mr. GR, myself, uh, Ms. Thompson, Mr. Dowd, to go and uh have multiple discussions with the PMO and architects uh to look at um the HCS design that was there. Uh, take into account items that we as a board and administration and others have said, if we were to scale back the plan, what are our priorities? Uh, and I believe after a number of meetings we've had, we have a good set direction um of where we're going. You know, again, Mr. Thompson will go over what that plan looks like and why we chose these considerations. And really, I want to say there's probably two considerations we're evaluating right now. Uh, we've done what, um, the first step, which is to say, here's the 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 project that we would see coming to the uh voters in March. We're still evaluating a couple, and it's really based on price. There's a couple, a couple of options. And Mr. Thompson will go through that. But I just wanna, again, it echoes what our meeting from a couple, a couple of weeks ago, where we've had some really thoughtful discussions um amongst ourselves and with the PMO and architects to change and shift. And you'll probably hear a little bit more changing and shifting we're doing, but we wanted to give the first cursory look uh tonight as far as like, we're not done with the design. However, in the matter of transparency, here are some discussions we're having and some ideas. And then talk about what's going to happen over the next month and a half, um, ahead of the uh June thirtieth summit to be considered for next year's um state reimbursement. So, Ms. Thompson, if you don't mind. And Megan, I just want to make sure you did get a copy of this.
I did, yes.
All right, perfect.
All right, good evening. Uh, I am uh very excited tonight uh to present to the board and to the public uh two draft design concepts uh for a new addition uh at the Hampstead Central School. Uh, what is really exciting is um the designs that we're gonna show are, they're new. Uh, they've not been part of any previous plan. Uh, I go back to March eighth, I was in this room when the vote was being counted, along with many others. And uh I was incredibly disappointed at the outcome that um the project had failed. Uh, so it didn't take long. On March ninth, we rolled up our sleeves, we met as a team, and we said, okay, what next? What do we need to do? And that included us, um, getting some of our key stakeholders together and doing, you know, what is referred to in the military as an after-action review. So we reviewed our actions. Uh, we looked at, you know, what was the strength of our um of our actions, uh, where were some areas of improvement, where did we fall short, and what were some of our next steps? Uh, we also had the benefit of community members who conducted a community survey and provided us with some really robust data on what um individuals in the community saw as the priority. Um, why folks voted for the initiative and or maybe why they didn't. And so we're able to take that and we're able to create some priorities. And we're also able to uh present uh two draft plans um that will come in um under the twelve point five million dollar uh budget um for last year's project. And, you know, another piece that has driven some of the decisions uh that have gone into this new design concept was back in March, uh, we had the Department of Homeland Security do a security audit on both buildings. Uh, we received a uh written copy of that report. Uh, the board has reviewed that report in a non-public session. And we have some concerns about um safety and security um with the current design at Hampstead Central School. So when we talk about identifying priorities, uh, the the number one priority for any future project is student safety. And I think you're gonna see that reflected uh in uh the two design plans um that we're going to look at. Um, I also just want to point out, if you're at home, I know it can be difficult to be able to see what's on the screen. Um, if you want to view the actual document that we're looking at, if you go to the Hampstead uh school district webpage and you click on the tab School Board, you'll see um an area called Board Documents. And you can click on that, and then you're gonna want to go to the second page of that, of that uh Board Document section. And you'll see meeting materials. You can view uh the entire school board packet. Uh, previous to tonight, that's something that we would uh release after the meeting. We've made the decision in consultation with the board. We're gonna actually um have the material prior to the meeting. So if you want to see this, uh, you can go to the website. Um, so let's take a look. We're gonna look at Design Concept One. Um, you will notice here, this should look somewhat familiar. Um, this would be a new uh main office area. This was in um last year's plan with a minor modification, and that modification being, if you look down here, you have a nurse's office. Uh, in last year's plan, the nurse's office would move to where the music room is. So essentially, we're creating controlled access. If you look at this plan, there are multiple layers for entry. And all traffic goes through a secure main office area. There's a foyer, uh, there's an area in which folks get vetted. Uh, by having the nurse's office in this area, uh, it allows easy access for parents. I do want to point out, and again, consider, this is a draft, because when we were discussing um this particular proposal, uh, there was some concern, if you look at the nurse's office down here, there's no exterior egress, which means what ends up happening is any traffic to the nurse's office gets routed through the main office. And that that's uh problematic for a variety of reasons, including uh privacy um and potential student illness. So you you're gonna see, we will revise this so that the nurse's office has an exit uh into a main hallway. So now where we deviate further on this plan, if we look, here's the existing sixties wing uh where we just completed uh the renovation. We essentially are looking in, this is Plan One, and I'll show you Plan Two momentarily. We're looking at building an additional classroom space off the back of the of the building. Now, again, the priority of this project is student safety. And we continue to have concerns because right here in our existing plan is a very narrow staircase. It's not up to code. Now granted, we're grandfathered in, uh, but there are some safety concerns in regards to that stairwell. So the plan you see here um looks to uh solve that problem by adding on the first floor a single classroom. And I'm gonna shift shortly to the second floor, where you see there's another one uh above. So this is classrooms going off the back. You'll notice there's no enclosure here of the courtyard. Um, and if we could advance the slide, I'll show you the next floor. Oh, well, actually, this is a, this is a close-up. So again, this nurse's office here, this brings the nurse's office from the other side of the building. You have a conference space, you have two office areas. Um, you have a foyer here, you have a lobby. So there's multiple barriers or what we call controlled access and a vetting process that's going to happen before anyone is actually able to um enter the building. Now, what that does for us, it actually creates classroom space. Because where the existing office is, that is going to become academic support, um, small group instruction and special ed. Currently, that happens in a regular uh nine hundred square foot classroom. We'll move that to the main office. And we'll create one additional uh classroom space. Uh, you can advance this slide. So then if you look here, this is the additional classroom that would be created off of the sixties wing. That's approx- approximately a nine hundred square foot classroom to code. And again, we have the benefit of a new stairwell that is um absolutely up to code. Okay, can advance. And so this right here is this, is the second floor. You'll see you have the the second floor classroom here. And what we've done over here, and and we we can um, we'll show you in the next slide, is we're and we're putting in a uh library media space. And this is really where um this project differentiates itself from previous projects. Essentially, we're gonna be building up from that main office. And and I I really have to um give um Jeff Dowd the the credit for this. You know, right after the March vote, Jeff just sat down, went to work, started um sketching out various options, worked with our architects uh to try to come up with something. And and this design, if we could advance to the next slide, please. This design um allows us to get the library media space we need. Uh, it's a twenty-five hundred square foot space. Um, you you'll notice here there's a stairwell. So this stairwell uh really is for emergency use so that we can be compliant um with providing the second egress. It's also important to note that this uh library uh media center exists. If you walk into uh the building, you go up the stairs, and you're gonna continue to go up the stairs to the second floor. There's a landing right there. So this library media center is not going to, it's going to be between the first and second floors. And it will be centrally located and will also have some additional space over here. And again, we're uh working with the architect to determine what we might, what might be the best use of this space. But this really puts the library media center in a centralized location. It allows us to um close off the rest of the building. So if we were to have activities at night, uh, meetings in the library media center, it 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 has, there's controlled access, so folks are not um in the rest of the building. And if you could uh move to the next slide, please. Okay, so so what I just described is sort of Design Concept One. That was developed by the architects. We are looking at, uh, we are currently getting pricing for Design One. So now Design Two is very similar. Uh, the the really, the big difference is rather than doing one classroom on the first floor and one on the second floor, we'd look to do two on the uh first floor and then two on the second floor. Again, this is really where we are examining pricing so that we can come back to the board uh at their June fourteenth meeting with some ballpark numbers and say, okay, this is what the addition of two classrooms look like. This is what the addition of four classrooms would look like. Um, it's also important to note with the addition of the library media center, um, we actually would gain a classroom because the library media center is actually in a classroom uh right now. So if the first design I showed you were to pass, uh, we essentially are picking up uh four classrooms. That would be uh one uh for student services, uh, the second one where the library media center was, and then the two additional classrooms would be off of the sixties wing. If this addition were to pass, then we're picking up uh two additional classroom spaces. And you can advance to the next slide. And again, this is what um the two-story addition would would look like. Again, we are solving this problem of eliminating the staircase that is not up to code by push pushing it back. You can go to the next slide. And again, you know, so I just want to point out that the other thing that we would gain here too is the existing nurse's office. Now that it is in the main office, uh, that would become additional space. Uh, that has a restroom in it, uh, which is a requirement for certain um inclusionary special ed programs. So potentially, you know, we've talked about program expansion for special education. Um, that could be uh one uh space that we could potentially use uh for future special education programs. So really, you know, what we're looking at here is the priority of student safety. We're looking at the addition of the main office that frees up classroom space. And we're also looking at pricing to give us additional classrooms, either two new classrooms or four. And, you know, so those of you that are looking at this, you know, here's what's not in here. What is not in here is a cafeteria. What is not in here is a music space. And what is not in here is a library off of the back we're building up. So there's no courtyard enclosure here. And, you know, I I really want to be clear because I, in the conversations I've had, I've had a lot of really great conversations with community members. I've had conversations with community members who have a lot of institutional memory. They they were at the Central School when the sixties wing was being built, or they helped to um gain community support for other projects. And I think they really impressed upon me the need for us to create priority. With the last project, we had several priorities, and I heard from community members, really, we need to narrow the focus. Student safety is it, you know, do we need a new cafeteria? I guess it really comes down to, how do you define need? It it is a nice to have. It's, it is inconvenient to have to disassemble and reassemble cafeteria tables in a PE space. It's really inconvenient to have a music class that is next to the cafeteria. But if we're going to create priorities, we have to prioritize student safety. We have to separate out the this is a really nice thing to have versus we absolutely need this. And uh so that's why I present, um, you know, these two draft design concepts. There's still some work that needs to be done with them. We still need to get pricing, but um I think we're on a, we're on a good path. I'm excited that we're able to come here and present something that has, um, you know, is a little different than than what we've seen in the past. And I don't know, Mr. Dowd, is there anything that you want to add?
Efficiency of the uh plan is that we have a two-story uh where the main office is instead of one. So trying to utilize everything under one roof on that end of the building is is um a lot more efficient than just leaving that as a one-story.
So entertain any questions folks have?
So the the gym and caf area here is the same as what it is now.
It is, yeah.
Just check, cause I said like upper gym and I'm like.
Yeah.
There's storage above it.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, so they ca- will maintain the same configuration for the cafeteria, unfortunately. And will also, uh, music will remain uh in its its current space.
If I could uh just add a little bit more to that, just because I, you know, I want to echo what you said about Mr. Dowd. I was very surprised, I think it was two days later, we see this drawing and like, where'd this come from? The architects already went to work. And uh, Mr. Dowd had come up with a really interesting uh concept, which was originally gonna be three floors, right? So we we've gone through, and this is not the only design we went through with the architects. We've gone through probably four iterations, if I guess, right now. Uh, but this was what, you know, where we started off was trying to get three stories in the front. So we would have, you know, the the office, then the library, and then two classrooms. Or flip that, it could have been two classrooms and a library. And so, you know, working with the architects, we understood that it just, uh, too many complications with floors, ceilings, height, et cetera. It didn't make sense. Uh, we also toyed with, well, what if we just do that, you know, um, two classrooms in that little cubby hole area there, right? And that came of some challenges that we hadn't thought of before, um, with, you know, that actually eliminates some classroom because now you have some rooms that don't have any light going to them. So some complications there. We evaluated the bathrooms that we talked about on the second floor. We said, okay, maybe that's something we can do later on with either a capital reserve or another means of uh funding. Um, so these iterations have taken a little while to get there. I know that we wanted to bring this. Uh, I think we, you know, really tried to charge forward with the end of April or even beginning of May. But uh, there's been a lot of discussion, and I just want to appreciate, you know, Mr. Dowd, Mr. Thompson and others that have like really working at this. So, you know, excited to see, you know, the choices that we've come up with, a couple more tweaks like to the nurse's office that we've talked about that doesn't make sense to be in that corner. But to see uh now, what does that look like for, you know, for budgeting purposes to bring to the voters. Um, so interested to see what that next step is.
Yeah, and you know, it it's our um intention to hold uh two informational sessions between now and June fourteenth. We have them tentatively scheduled. I'll finalize those tomorrow, send those out to community. So that you can um come ask questions, uh, provide, you know, input. Cause again, it is a draft. There are some some changes. Again, the nurse's office is a great example, um, even the the usage of the li- of the library space. So we definitely want input on on this. Um, you know, we are under a little bit of a timeline. We do plan to submit our building aid application. It's due on June thirtieth. Um, so, you know, when we get to June thirtieth, that plan that's submitted, there are some minor changes that that the DOE will allow. Um, so the conversations can continue about the process and about what the final product will look like. But, you know, we're, you know, working towards that deadline of June thirtieth. We're on track. And uh, I think, you know, I I feel like we've landed in a really good place.
So uh, so this would
So, uh, so this would address all safety concerns we have currently? Well, most safety concerns we have, basically the, the front is the main safety concern.
Yeah, I, I, I would say, going back to the information that was shared from the Department of Homeland Security, there currently is not an easy fix to some of their security concerns other than the additions to main office that will solve many of the problems.
And then as far as bringing, uh, kids back into the district that may be doing services elsewhere, that would put us in a position to do that?
Yeah, potentially. I think it's, um, it's more about the, so the answer is potentially yes. It's really about building capacity, um, building additional programming. Again, I've talked about the NEC program. That's a program for students, um, who have autism, um, that has been highly successful in other schools. I'd love to bring the program here, uh, we just don't have the space. And, um, so there's definitely future opportunity to keep kids in, in, in districts.
And if we do the two versus four classrooms in the back, would that, would the four classrooms definitely cover our space needs in the foreseeable future versus the two classrooms?
Yeah, I hate to, to, uh, work in absolutes, like definitely, um, you know, we're not, not knowing what the future may bring in terms of enrollment. But what I would suggest is i- if we were to get a four classroom addition off the back, that solves so many of our needs because that potentially, they're standard, um, 900 square foot classrooms, but that doesn't mean we can't use them for other, um, uses such as, um, special education programming. Uh, so it, it certainly solves our short-term, uh, problems.
So, yeah, so with this plan, we get security, we get increased, uh, special services, and we get the room that we need, the space that we need.
It does, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that one thing that, you know, we've talked about is kindergarten, right? Right now, we're not able to offer full-day kindergarten to all the families that have requested it, right? This, this allows for that as an example, which again is that, that's, you know, essentially money coming into the district as full-day kindergarten is, you know, about $5,000 per child, right? We turn students away. I think on average, we've heard 20, 30 students on average we turn away.
Ev- every year is different.
Right.
This, this year, Dr. Chaney has indicated there's likely to be a waiting list.
I think when we talk about the two classrooms versus the four classrooms, those are not the net classrooms added, right? So merely by moving the library, we're freeing up another classroom and we're freeing up that class area. We're freeing up space for the nurse's offices, which can be used for delivery of services as well as the main office. So just because we're adding or proposing two or four, in any event, it's more than that at, in terms of classrooms we're making available.
I mean, I'd say, you know, another thing that, um, matter transparency, you know, things that when we went through discussions about the library, I went back and forth as a board member saying, well, shouldn't the library be in the middle of the cla- of the school so that it's central to all the students? Um, and I appreciated the dialogue we had because, you know, there's discussion around like, by moving into the front, we gained two things. One is that we have a library that's in the front of the building. So if we need to corner that off for something that's happening after school or, or, you know, more parents or, you know, community members coming in, they can come into the library without going into the rest of the school. So it was a benefit. The other one is one that we've talked about that, you know, administration is definitely touted of, you know, keeping classrooms in their clusters. This allows better clustering of this, of the classrooms. So we don't have to think about moving classrooms later on. You know, Dr. Chaney always has to think about, you know, my first grades are, you know, I have a first grade room over with the fourth graders. I have a second grade with the third graders. This allows for that, which is optimal for classroom learning. So I thought, you know, I've been convinced to move it up, but I still, you know, in the back of my mind, I'm like, wow, we're not going to have a centralized library. But it also, you know, I think it, it makes sense to have it up front like this, which is a different design. So I appreciate Mr. Dowd bringing that up. Anything else from board members?
I didn't have any questions more for, uh, the superintendent, but I, what are we thinking for years for the term? Because we were, what, the last school bond was what, 10 years for 12 million? So what are we thinking for this? Like I, in my head, I had, I, I don't know. Like we have one, there's one and a half million that's on the books for the fire department that's coming off this year. So if we're effectively replacing that, we could do it over four years and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't increase the time, I don't, yeah.
I, I think it's kind of, my, my pain is kind of early to tell. I think we'd have to task Mr. Dowd with, you know, finding what is that, you know, as small as, you know, we wouldn't do a one year. Let's just put that out of window, right? Probably wouldn't do it two years, let's put that, you know, but that's my opinion here, right? But I'd say, you know, probably do a three, four, or five at the most. That, that's what my suggestion would be for the board to think about, you know, for us to discuss. But I think as we, you know, I think that's something we tend to wait a little bit longer so we can get in what the actual rate's going to be. You know what I mean? I don't think we could get a quoted rate now for something that's going to be in a year. But Mr. Dowd?
Right.
And then we can look at the rate when we get there.
No, I agree with that.
Right, like, like when we looked at the last time, looking at, what was it, 10 years versus 15? We did 15 and it went through, we were paying another, an extra million dollars. So we were like, that doesn't make any sense. So that's the stuff we have to look at.
Yeah, I'm just, so my, so my concerns have somewhat changed because I'm not on a fixed, I'm not on a fixed income like some of the people in the retire, our retirement community, but I am on a fixed contract over the next three years. So I can predict what is happening. And then with inflation rates, like the cost and the cost increase per year, that is starting to become more concerning to me because I am, I'm a, I'm a teacher on a teacher's income trying to maintain a household with one income. So that's, it's getting a little bit more dicey for me and I, I want to support it, but it's, I was all for the one last year and now with the, the changes in the economy and stuff like that, that is, is somewhat more concerning. So, and, but we are, if we, we need, and if we want to apply for the building aid, we have to have a $5 million number, correct? To, to apply for the state building aid, we need a $5 million number.
Correct.
Right, so we're looking at probably around a $5 million bond.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at, we'll find out in, you know, three weeks.
We'll see what this looks like, correct, yeah, okay.
But I think that, you know, where you're going with it, I would agree. But that's why my, my thought would be also is that if we voted in a, um, a budget for, you know, the fire department, which is about a million and a half-ish, right?
Yeah.
And looking to our friend Laurie over here to make sure we're keeping ourselves honest here. But if we could keep it to a million and a half or under.
Yes.
I think that should be a good target, right? And to keep it as small in years as possible.
Correct.
And consider what's going on with the economy with, you know, increasing inflation, increasing gas prices and food and everything else. We have to take all that into consideration.
And all the reasons you're saying is part of the reason why we're like, we need to downscale this, do the things that are the priorities first and then figure out the other.
Correct, and, and then also having a small project over shorter years gives us more flexibility going forward. So people, people can feel the brunt and then they can reassess if, if and when we need to add more, what other needs we have later on. I think it's, I think it's a wise way to go. Yeah, and I, and I do think we need to account on the idea of that the town budget is going to be going up. It's gone up on average around 4% over the last five years and the school budget's, uh, roughly the same. And try to build that into the idea of how our taxes are going to go up over that time period as well, which, and honestly, like, this is new to me and I, you guys are experienced, so I do depend on you guys. But I, I have to ask these questions because I don't necessarily know, so I, I appreciate the feedback, so thank you.
Yeah, I think also just to remind everybody why we're shooting for that $5 million as a minimum is because, uh, in order to file for, um, state aid, and while it may be a, a small percent to actually get, be considered and/or be awarded, you have to go into the state, um, with at least a minimum of $5 million to even be considered. So that's why we're planning on going for minimum $5 million. And that's why we'll come back, you know, once we understand what the two classroom versus four classroom, um, price is. Because if it's just a little bit more, knowing the four classrooms would benefit us long-term, you know, that's what we're trying to consider is weighing that balance. Especially if we could get them considered for state building aid, which is up to 30%. That, that's a good, you know, chunk of change back to, you know, the community. Um, so think about $5 million, 30%, you're looking at, I'll do my numbers right, a million and a half dollars back. So a $5 million plan would be $3.5 million essentially, um, not, not including interest, of course. But those are the considerations we need to make. Now back to yours, once we know what that dollar amount is, then it, it would behoove us to then talk about, do we want to do a two-year, three-year, four-year, five-year plan? You know, I wouldn't support a 10-year and I wouldn't support a one-year.
Yeah.
But somewhere in between, we'd have to talk about.
So, and here's a question, and I have no idea on this. If we got the state aid and we have the bond, the bond, could we, so it goes down to three and a half million, but it's a five-year bond. Does it then come down in price for the five years? Or could we turn it into a shorter bond to save on interest?
I'm not sure. I think we'd have to talk about what that looks like. I think that if I remember correctly, Mr. Dowd, how does that, that work with the, um, building aid? We get a percent upfront and then a percent at the end?
Basically, yeah, it's, it is paid in both when the project's complete. Like, it's, yeah, it's not spread out. Years ago, they used to spread them out over the term of whatever bond you have. So if you have a 20-year bond, you get, you get payment from the building aid 20 years.
Okay.
Oh, but now it's all down.
Thank you very much.
1.7, it's for the fire department, so.
You got it, Grant.
After, but after there, there's a bunch of rebates. I actually had it up earlier. It's 1.475 that goes to the taxpayers.
Got it.
1.47.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
1.7, but brought down to 1.4 thanks to a lot of work by a lot of good individuals in town. That's bam. Um, and that's what we want to do here also is look at, you know, and further, what else is out there besides the state building aid? We'll continue to look at that with Mr. Thompson and Mr. Dowd as they've said, um, in the past also. What else? Anything else for Mr. Thompson? Again, thank you very much. Looking forward to the next board meeting.
All right, moving on. Um, Mr. Thompson, turning over to you again with the strategic plan. Second reading and adoption.
Yeah, all right. All right, so in your board packet is, uh, the copy of the strategic plan. You'll recall at the last school board meeting, uh, the Strategic Planning Steering Committee, um, uh, did a presentation, uh, to present the document to the board and to the community. Uh, we had made the decision that, uh, we would like to have, sorry, the presentation, uh, would be, uh, first read and we'd bring it back here for second read, uh, that we'd collect feedback from, uh, community members. And so I present, uh, the strategic plan here for, um, second read for the board. Answer any questions folks have. Um, you know, I do want to point out that, you know, uh, something that was stated in the previous meeting, which is this is a living document, right? So it is our intention to make changes, uh, to this document over the next three years. I can sit here today and tell you, this is the vision and the direction that we're going. And then next year, it, it changes, it adapts. Again, we're committed to continuous improvement. I would come to the board, uh, with any, uh, changes to the document. Um, and we could have that conversation, uh, anything that was substantive in nature, so.
Board members, any questions about the plan other than the amazing design that went behind it?
Just FYI, there were a couple, I'm probably loud enough, but that's okay. There were a couple changes that have been made to this, but not, it's just like things I saw with extra spaces and things like that. But one of them that's not reflected in this is we, as Bob was saying, since this was a, a living document, we, um, did put a revision number on the back, um, so that when it does make changes, we'll update that. So it's just not reflective in this printout. And the other things are minor, just spaces here and there that I didn't like.
Okay. I think for me, just one question, just to make sure, Mr. Thompson, you had mentioned that we would have something on the agenda for one of the first board meetings in the fall to understand what plans are being put in place. Is that correct?
Yeah, so each building, um, again, will design an action plan off of this where they're going to direct, uh, address specific, uh, strategies and priorities. They'll create action plans that will have deliverables, timeline, and also the individuals responsible, uh, for that. So after, well, uh, assuming that the board passes the strategic plan as early as tomorrow, you know, this will be sent off to the principals so they can begin, um, to work on the action plan. Uh, the goal would be for them to, um, collect feedback from staff members, uh, into June up to the end of the school year and then begin working on that action plan. Uh, we have our administrative retreat at Pinkerton Academy in early August. And what we would do there is, uh, we would vet those plans. We'd, uh, district administration would give the buildings, uh, feedback, help to modify those plans. And then we'd come to you at the first, um, meeting of the, uh, year, um, to do a presentation on what those action plans look like.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions? This time I'm going to be looking for, um, a motion to adopt this new strategic plan from the second reading.
So moved.
Looking for a second? Any discussions? All right, Melissa, would you mind taking a roll call on this?
Mr. Giard?
Yes.
Dr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Malcolm?
Yes.
Mrs. Pellegrini?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
All right. All right, on to summer hiring authorization. Uh, every summer, we go into, you know, a little bit of a hiatus here with the board unless there's, uh, reasons for us to, uh, meet. Typically, we do not meet for the second, um, meeting in, uh, June. And then we don't come back until mid-August or at the end of August, depending on the board's will. Uh, but during that time, as we know, there are, um, hiring, uh, decisions being made. So we are looking for, you know, under provisions of policy GCF, um, that the board elects one board member to act on personal matters while the board is not in session. So looking for a board member who would want to take on that responsibility, who would like to volunteer?
I know, you feel like you're looking at me. I can do it if you, if nobody else wants to do it.
I was going to ask what, it's, it's basically you, if they hire, you take a look at it and get, basically you're giving temporary approval until we can get back and fully approve it.
Yeah, Melissa, do you want to speak a little bit more on the actual policy?
Yes, Dr. Hubner is correct. So you would be given kind of like temporary approval. You would come to the SAU and you would review any personnel reports that we had ready for whoever would be that summer hiring person. And then just as a formality, the first meeting that is back in the fall, the entire board ratifies the actions of that board member.
I can do that if you want.
Who wants to fight for it?
I'm the only one here without kids, so.
All right.
You can do it.
I'd like to, um, motion that Dr. Hubner is the liaison for the school board to, uh, be the summer hiring authorization, uh, per policy GCF.
So moved.
Yep. Do we need to take a roll call on that?
Yeah, we should.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Giard?
Yes.
Dr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Malcolm?
Yes.
Mrs. Pellegrini?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right, um, policy, uh, the next one here is on the superintendent eval. Uh, just again, as we've been doing the last few, uh, meetings, uh, we will be going into non-public tonight to continue the discussion on the superintendent eval. Um, to, to discuss the evaluation per the superintendent's own response, his, uh, direct reports and the school board members. Uh, we will be looking to develop that feedback and approve the written valuation no later than the end of this month. And that's what we plan to do again tonight is to go into non-public to further discuss this and look to close. So I don't think if there's anything else about that for board members, all right? All right, next, uh, board members, you have, uh, policies for first reading and second reading. Uh, you have two policies for your second read and two policies for first read in your packets. Um, you have for your second reading from the last meeting, policy J I C D about student discipline and due process. Then you have also policy E H, uh, public access to school district records. Um, and then for first reading, we have policy J I C, student conduct, and policy B E D G, um, on minutes. So I would like to look for a motion. Let's separate these into second reading and first readings. Let's separate these into second reading and first readings. So a policy to approve and discuss the second readings for policies JICD and EH.
So moved.
I don't believe there's any changes, but any, oh, a second, sorry.
A second.
Making for a second.
And there haven't been changes since the first reading? Okay.
So any discussion? Melissa, would you mind taking the roll call on this?
Mr. Giard?
Yes.
Dr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Malcolm?
Yes.
Mrs. Pellegrini?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
All right. So then, board members, for their first reading, again, is JIC for student conduct and BEDG on minutes. I don't know if anyone from the policy committee wants to speak to these, but what's being presented?
I don't mind. So policy JIC is sort of the the third policy that the committee has reviewed in terms of discipline, and this was the result of some fairly significant changes that were codified into law back in 2019. So JIC really is a revision prior to the change in statute. It really focuses on progressive discipline, due process for students. And again, it really aligns with our current practices. The second one, meeting minutes, BEDG. This was really just an updated policy recommendation from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. It aligns with most recent legal updates. There is some new language that's more specific, defining and outlining minutes required, content required, approval, access, and special provisions for meetings that include non-public sessions.
I'll wait for a motion. I do have a couple of questions, but I'll be looking for, actually, no motion because it's first read.
So on part D2, the sealing non-public minutes. So part C basically says, if I'm reading it right, that we should make a recommendation for how long it's going to be sealed when we seal minutes? Is that different than what we've normally been doing?
Right.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Elliott, we typically don't take public comments during the readings. But if you want, after the meeting, and before we go into second reading.
Under district policy, policy adoptions are, you're supposed to offer the audience, the public, an opportunity to comment.
Is that an refer, sorry, if you're correct, apologize. I thought that was before second reading, but is that during first reading, Melissa?
I'm not exactly sure what Mr. Elliott is referring to. Could you clarify?
Sure, let me pull up the policies. Bear with me. Policy BGB. The board is supposed to offer an opportunity for concerned groups to react to the policy proposal.
So procedurally, what we do is we'll put this policy notes packet on the website. And so when that's posted to the public, then they're allowed to come into the meeting during public comments to make any comments about those policies. However, now that you bring it up, I do think that I forgot to add this packet to the website this round, but typically I do that every time.
Well, I just wanted to point out to the board, under JICD, under no pupil shall be penalized academically solely by virtue of missing class due to suspension. That policy is listed under expulsion. So that mistake creates a conflict. And we should look at correcting that to prevent confusion and a student who's expelled from being left out of the learning environment, so.
Thank you. Good point.
All right, so. So basically, what he's saying is if you say that punishment, basically, the punishment can interfere with academics, but expulsion would interfere with academics, you have to fix that.
Right.
Okay. All right, I'm just clarifying.
Yep. Thank you. I'll be looking for a motion to move this from first reading to second reading for policies JIC and BEDG.
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
So I could, there's a, there's quite a bit to read for these these ones here, but one question I have is, Mr. Thompson, if you can help me out with this one. On page seven of eight, for BEDG, sealed meaning, sealed minutes list? Didn't read it here, but maybe I just missed it. Where do, if somebody was looking for the sealed minutes list, where would they find that? Because it says that the superintendent is directed to maintain the list. Is that maintained on a website, or is that maintained just somewhere internally?
Yeah, that would be maintained in our office.
Okay. Any other questions at this moment? Take a little while to read this later on, but there's no question or comments right now. Melissa, you take the roll call on that.
Mr. Giard?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Giard?
Yes.
Dr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Malcolm?
Yes.
Mrs. Pellegrini?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So next up is board comments and correspondence. Start all the way to my left over there, Mr. Hubner.
I actually have had my first district safety committee meeting. It was interesting. Principal Danola informed us of the interesting circumstances that started the committee, which I really appreciate for her jump making the hoops that she did to do that. We talked about having training in place for the Alice Training CPR and the Incident Command System, and having it on a rotating basis to ensure that staff are constantly updated, and how to bring new staff in and have them on the right page right away. And speaking of the Incident Command Training, when the Department of Homeland Security was here, they did what's called a tabletop exercise, basically. A scenario was given, and they helped the district to run through the scenario in real time with the pressure and unexpected circumstances to have them do so. And originally, they did it at the central school, and then they worked on a scenario in the middle school. Both principals said that it was incredibly valuable, as well as the other people that were there, to put them under that stress of that situation. And in my circumstances, as a first responder, I find that using that stress as a scenario helps you to later on be more readily into those scenarios. And I think it's an excellent job, and they did commend Superintendent Thompson on how well he ran the second exercise. And that it was a very a very, a scenario that would be very possible in real life, and one that I've experienced in my own school. And I thought it was interesting and very well done. Jeff Mackey did a great job giving an update on facilities and how we are fixing any of the small issues that we had from homeland security. And then the SRO talked about bringing certain people to speed. And then one of the things we talked about was possibly having the substitutes, older substitutes mentoring new substitutes to get them up to speed and on the same page. I think that would be wise, too, because then you don't have administration training them. You have people who are experienced at that level. And then the administration, you know, kind of helping them out as well to have that combined experience so that they are more up to speed and they're more comfortable in their environment when they first come in. But overall, I thought it was incredibly interesting and really well done, so.
Giard, nothing. Ms. Malcolm?
I don't have anything to speak, to be mean.
Erin?
All I have is I attended the Central Schools Community Show, and it was really adorable. And it was really nice to see the kids getting back to normal. They were pretty excited, so. They did a great job.
That's great. The only thing I have, which was handed to me tonight, is we did get correspondence from the Hampstead Association of School Staff looking to the letter to bargain their contract, which would be beginning 2023, July 1st, 2023. So I just asked with the board's permission, I'd like to reach out to our legal team to begin this process. And that I would, you know, look, I would ask that we come back on the 14th of June. We discuss who will be taking part in the contract negotiations for HAF. I know we've talked about it informally, that we were going to get this going, but now that it's upon us, we'll decide it at that meeting most likely, who will be taking part in the HAF versus HGA contract, since that'll be starting this year for consideration, and Warren Arco in March to begin July 1st, 2023. So. Everybody all right with that, if I reach out to legal?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Meg. All right, that's it there. So we're going to turn over the consent agenda.
Okay, there, we do not have anything under the personnel report. So moving forward with the superintendent report, I think we'll start with Nicole Thomaselli, who has a few updates from our curriculum department.
Hello again. So regarding state testing, we are well underway with our New Hampshire SAS testing. We have several more days left this week. And our preliminary results are starting to come in. We're going to be meeting with the math and ELA teams at both schools to take a look at our data. We also wanted to talk about the Summer Learning Academy that we'll be planning later this summer. We have a variety of enrichment and remediation programs that we are currently developing. We just started meeting with teachers this week to see what availability people have. So we're going to be repeating a Summer Learning Academy in August. We're going to be doing a morning model and an afternoon model in person for four days, half-day programs. And we'll also be offering for families that are going to be away for the summer or unavailable to come on site. We're going to be offering some online virtual coaching for remediation of math and reading skills. I'm not going to be calling it connection coaching, but it'll be something similar to what we've been doing in connection coaching, focusing on specific targeted age and skill-based small group instruction virtually.
Questions or comments from the board? Thank you.
All right, and I'll turn it over to Jeff, who's going to give us an update on the lot line adjustment.
So the Central School Lot Line Adjustment has been approved by the zoning board unanimously, and the surveyor has staked out the property and marked on the street where the lot lines will be. So our next step is planning board, and that should be in the next month or so to get the application in there. But if anyone would like to see what that actually is going to look like, it is staked out and marked out at Central School, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so just a couple of other items. So last week, Nicole Thomaselli, middle school counselor, Melissa Karpinski and myself, we traveled to Pinkerton Academy. We met with the CTE directors and the dean of instruction, Derek Lee. And really, there's two purposes to this. One is, you know, we now have a strategic plan that has passed, and one of the priorities is to explore off-site learning opportunities for our students. So again, we see, we want to create multiple pathways for students. We have students that are going to leave our care, they're going to go on to high school. They'll move in, move on to university for four years. Some will go to two-year trade schools, get an associate's degree. Some will go into the military, some will go into the workforce. We want to create as many opportunities for students to get where they need to go. We see our collaboration with the CTE program at Pinkerton as an excellent opportunity to get kids to think about their future and what it is they want to do. And really, the second goal is to provide multiple opportunities for our students to go to Pinkerton, have what we're calling like the Pinkerton Experience. So right now, presently, our eighth grade students will go over to Pinkerton. I think a reasonable goal for us next year would be three experiences for our students. And, you know, this is work that we really had hoped to do this year, and I think COVID sort of threw a curveball at us. You know, so we're currently exploring having our elementary school students go over. They have a wonderful maple syrup Sugar Shack at Pinkerton. I think I've had conversations with Dr. Chaney. It would be wonderful if we could have a field trip, you know, really create the experience so that when the kids are going into eighth grade, some of that anxiety about that transition to high school has sort of, sort of disappeared. I was also pleased to learn about a program that I didn't know about before our visit, and it's called Careers in Education. So one of the CTE programs that they have at Pinkerton is training aspiring teachers in their craft. And presently, those students engage in sort of an internship work experience in the dairy schools. And I found it ironic that some of our Hampstead kids are interning in the dairy schools. No offense to dairy. I would love to get some of those students to come to our schools to do an internship. Really, you know, we've talked about the need for support with response to instruction. Wouldn't it be great if we could have some of our high school seniors who've actually taken classes in education working in small groups with, you know, some of our students for the purposes of remediation? So, you know, the expectation is, there's a lot of work we wanted to do with Pinkerton that didn't necessarily get done. And now we're going to put plans in place to get that done. Also, I, you know, reported out to our families via email and social media. We now have exterior cameras on all the school buses. This was a collaboration between First Student and the Hampstead Police Department. The Hampstead Police Department was thrilled that this is an action that we've taken. It will help in the prosecution of anyone who commits a traffic violation involving a school bus. Also, Dr. Chaney mentioned Kara Gordon was nominated for New Hampshire State Teacher of the Year. We also had a nomination at the middle school that I wanted to mention as well, and that is fifth grade teacher Jen Howard. So it's a pretty extraordinary thing when your school district has one teacher who's nominated for that award. It is a completely other thing when you have two. So I think there's a little competition going there. The process is such a great process, both teachers will get the opportunity to to meet the other candidates for Teacher of the Year. So it really is a tremendous experience. As Carl said, the district safety committee met today, very productive meeting. There's a lot of work, including work over the summer. There's a lot of work, including work over the summer, that we're going to look to do. Also, last week, our district attendance meeting, district attendance committee met. We're developing attendance intervention plans. Those are plans for students that are struggling to get to school. They're individualized plans. They help provide support to families. Again, as I told the committee last week, the most important work that we can do as educators is get kids to school. It's hard for us to work our magic if we can't get them through the door. So that's work that will continue. We've had students who've missed a lot of days of school this year for very valid reasons. But nonetheless, they've missed school. It's our job as educators to support families in making sure that their kids are getting to school and they're aware that they need to be academically. And I think that that's going to do it for my report. I'll take any questions that board members might have.
I just have to say this, because I did hear from quite a few parents that got those letters about the attendance. And I don't know how, right now, they could have avoided that. Because when you were out for COVID, you had to be out for 10 days.
Yeah.
You had it twice, you were out for 10 more days. So I don't know if we're going to try to take any of that into consideration, because I don't know what that's, how that's going to change. I mean, it's changed obviously to five days, but, you know, moving forward, it's, you know, five days is five days, no matter what.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, we have certainly heard from a number of parents in regards to the attendance letters. And again, you know, the decision to send out a letter is not universal. We look at each case, look at attendance numbers, look at academic impact. Sometimes, you know, it's not always solely based on being in a five or 10-day quarantine. There are other factors that go into that. And again, the first outreach with the letter really is to sort of initiate a conversation. And yeah, a lot of it has been driven by multiple quarantines. I've experienced it in my own family. But nonetheless, time away from school does have an impact on a kid, and we want to make sure that we're working with families, so.
Any other comments? All right. Other business, old business? Should have probably said this under correspondence, but just wanted to take the opportunity to think. We had a discussion earlier from 6:00 to 7:00 PM with State Senator Regina Birdso. And just wanted to appreciate that she came in and had discussions about what is up at the state capital and under consideration or has been voted on or has, you know, just been under discussion, as well as discussing a number of items in the coming year that we would either influence or, you know, have some input to. So, you know, I appreciated that the conversation was pretty candid and open with all of us. So looking forward to more discussions in the future. With that, we will be looking to go to non-public. So I'll be looking for a motion under RSA 91A colon three, two A and C. And this is to discuss superintendent evaluation.
So moved.
For a second?
A second.
A second from Erin Pellegrini. And Melissa, would you mind taking a roll call?
Mr. Giard?
Yes.
Dr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Malcolm?
Yes.
Mrs. Pellegrini?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Time is 9:19.
All right, thank you very much.